All right, we're gonna call our Tuesday, November the 12th, 2024 work session into order. First on the agenda is a presentation from the Harbor Board. First round edits, Fairhope docks conceptual plan. Micah?
Hey, thanks for having us. So this kind of started, we, I guess, five years ago when you guys had ordered a conceptual plan for the Fairhope docks. And I think Hurricane Sally came and derailed, you know, everything. And so now the marina is back together and operating well. And so we thought, let's, you know, move forward with a plan there. And so I think Jack said, we have a plan, we all dust it off and let's see where it goes. So we did. And we've met several times and kind of looked and we have a few edits that we would like to see implemented into the proposed plan so we can kind of see how that looks and plays out. I think you'll have a copy of all of these. Do you want me to read through all of that or?
Just present what you think is important for the public to hear and to know.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought we had a screen, had the, there we go.
There it is.
There's the concept up on the architect. He did kind of some highlights. There's a more detailed plan here if anyone needs to see more of that. But, you know, we liked the concept, we liked the beautification, everything that he's done. Basically, we would like to see it drawn with it more directed towards boaters and cruisers coming in as opposed to visitors with cars and via, you know, tourists by cars. We think it could be a really good boating destination and a place to support the boating community in Fairhope. We'd like to see improved vehicular circulation to include a more secure parking area for slip holders and to kind of protect the boats that are there from, you know, people coming in through the night and things like that. Just have possibly even a gated entry at night after hours. We have all gone back and forth with that current building, the big metal building that's currently in place. The current proposed plan has that being torn down completely. A lot of us feel like there could be still some good life into that building and we'd like to see some ideas of repurposing, you know, that or reconfiguring it to for marine industry, you know, somehow. I don't know exactly what that would look like, but we'd like to see some ideas for marine vendors, you know, maybe fishing and supply or outboard repair, you know, whatever, just some ideas to reuse that building. As far as the boat storage and dry dock, we'd like to see a hold on that right now just because of the traffic that that brings, the cost, the machinery, the staffing. We've had a lot of requests for boat lifts and so we'd like the plan to include a specific area for boat lifts and maybe where they can be uniform and consistent and a nice design, you know, to stay there. So we'd like to see that on the plan. The current plan, I don't know if it shows on the, but he had had a lighthouse at the end of the beach and on the rock jetties. And we'd like to see an option to change that to a gazebo that would even be potentially designed like the Mobile Bay Lighthouse that would include a gazebo area for people to gather, watch the sunset, picnic, that kind of thing. And we just felt like that might look more like what we see traditionally on Mobile Bay. I think, you know, on the beach area, just have it more like a park with access for kayaks and paddle boards and, you know, Adirondack chairs, that kind of thing. They're also on the detail plan, you can probably see on that bottom left-hand corner, there's a proposal for some little bungalows or cottages for rent. And I don't think any of the board members were opposed, but we just wanted to kind of make sure that that stayed within like a, maybe a state park or that kind of idea for those to keep it, you know, which I think the plan shows.
So that view is coming down Sea Cliff?
It is.
Is that when you first entered to the harbor?
Correct. So that's an idea for those. Now, if we keep that existing building, I don't know what that would, you know, what that space would look like, you know, there. And that's the reason I think we'd like to see a round of edits included in here just to see what could, what could be done and what that would look like. But that, that's pretty much the gist of what we're asking is the council just to approve, I guess, funding or to order the architect to, let's see one more round of edits before we do a final approval on this.
Okay, all right. Counsel?
Yeah, I appreciate this and all the input. It really helps the council out because we know that you got a good cross-section of boaters there just to kind of understand what the people would like to see. I think that some of these things could be done pretty easily and I think that some of them might take some more time and more study and more budget, you know, it's, as always, budget constraints. You know, as we're talking about a seafood co-op, I think that, you know, we would, we would have to see some seafood there. We have a couple of boats that are still actively shrimping and it's good to see that. So maybe I'd like to understand more what your thinking is there. As far as boat lifts go, you know, we did, we have written an ordinance now and we've got some uniformity to that. So that's, I think, moving in the direction that you recommend. I think I really like the dock store and the ship store and the concessions. Of course, we can always improve our restaurants and showers and laundries for boaters as we grow and as we get more of a, and we're pretty popular for loopers now, but as that continues to grow, I should say, as opposed to grow, continues to grow, we need to, you know, make that as nice as a lot of our other amenities in the city. So there's, there's a lot here. It may take a little while to get through this, but I really appreciate all the work and all the inputs. And I think-
And I think at this time that it's more about, can we see that implemented on this plan so that we can see the concept?
Right.
You know, what that would look like here.
Sure. Okay, yeah. That's a little easier then.
Yeah. Can we, can we get the architect to, you know, write, to draw these in and integrate this with the current plan just so we can see what that really looks like on there?
And you know, it's, it's truly a treasure, this area for our city. And also, I would add to this though, something that I've talked to you about recently is that what we could do to the jetties to specifically prevent us from having to dredge so often in there. I know a lot of the sediments coming down Fly Creek and probably, I don't think all the jetties in the world's gonna help with that, but the part that may be coming from the bay, you know, the less money we have to spend on dredging, the more money we would have available for, you know, making it, making the facilities we have nicer and adding amenities there. So I still, still think that that's, you know, a pretty high priority as well.
Okay.
That would be one thing I would add to the list.
Okay.
Counsel, anybody else? Yeah. Come on up, Skip.
One thing that we want, that I'd like to have say is what we'd like to see is much less detailed. He spent a lot of time on all these color renderings and everything. And I think if we had kind of a, if he went back and we had kind of a conceptual view of the elements that we've talked about here, it would be a much less expensive effort on the part to move to the next kind of planning stage. That'd be my thought on it.
Yeah, that was my next thought because the whole point of pulling it off the chef was because we didn't want to spend on another architectural design. And so that's why we were trying to dust this off and use it. So I appreciate that comment because that was my next question. Otherwise, we're right back where we started.
No, I think we, I think the next step would be not to create another version of this, but to create more of a conceptual view of it that we could then plug in details as we refine it again. I don't think this is gonna be the last time because some things we suggest y'all aren't gonna like and some things y'all suggest we don't.
No, we like everything.
But I think if we spend less effort on this type of presentation at this point, I think it would serve us all better.
I agree. There were some points on here I think that could be done quicker than others too. I mean, I would even, I would even challenge the council to say, listen, look at a couple of these, even buy the spring.
Right, and maybe we can, we can have it in phases, which he did on this current plan. I want to draft, have some phases drawn in, you know, that meet those goals.
And I think it'd serve for him to meet with us at the beginning of this next cycle.
Yeah, I think that-
Yeah, we'll need to talk about that and, you know, budget for that because he's not, he's not cheap.
All right. Is that it, guys? Is that it? I'm excited about that. I mean, well, I think that's something that, that we'll look into and see if we can get that going again and so it doesn't sit on the shelf again for so long. Yeah, see if we can start moving a little bit. All right. Agenda item number two is a discussion of Long's Human Resource Services to supply temporary employees to supplement this existing workforce. Good afternoon, Brother George.
So we have been working really hard on trying to improve the applicants in the process of getting applicants with the city for a while. We got NeoGov, which is fantastic, improves our platform, we're getting people, you know, our outreach and getting out there for people looking for jobs is getting better. The reason why that I have gotten with the mayor and Hannah about possibly going down this route is our entry level positions, our lower level positions that are our higher turnover rates, not only for the reason that the people sometimes just don't work out, but a lot of times whenever the people succeed and they are good employees, we pull from these positions to move them up to the, to the next level. And I would like to hope that Public Works can be the guinea pig for this process to work with Long's, to try to get entry level positions through them in our senate, I mean, our custodial staffing and our landscape department and see how it goes and see how it works with us and our relationships with them. And hopefully the city can grow with that on these, these, these positions because one of the things that benefits us with them is they will have a pool of applicants that have already applied, already been through background checks, already been through drug screens, already shown interest in the field that we're looking for. It's where if we have an employee that gets promoted or retire or any of the vacancies that come about, we can call them and pretty much within a week's period of time, we can have somebody sitting in front of us face to face to where when you go through the process of posting a position, reviewing the applicant's interview process, offering the position to the, to the individual, then orientation, sometimes it takes quite a considerable amount of time. And we've had a couple of them that, well, actually, believe it or not, go through the entire process, even pre-orientation, and then not show up for work. So this, it's a lot of admin work that could be taken off of our staff and you'd actually save some money on that end of the aspect. I realize when you look at the price sheet, it's somewhat of a sticker shock, but you think about it, it's basically $7 an hour per employee that you're paying Long's for this person to go through. And the idea behind this is, is that you get good employees through them, that you work for the full 720 hours and at the end of the 720 hours, you pull them on full time. But that, that $7 covers their workman's comp, their insurance, everything.
So we don't have to, we don't have to cover the insurance?
No.
That seems like more than enough to pay for that.
Yes, sir.
And Mayor, do you know?
And we already have the salary budget. We already have all that budget for those employees, so it's frankly, it's the money for all of them to stay in that home now. If they start updating employees, they don't want to pay for that.
It's almost like a lease agreement on a car. If you don't like it, you can send it back.
Except we don't like things that are forced that way.
No, but, but I mean, it is, it is a benefit for us and for the employee. It gives a test run to whether they like us and we like them, but.
No, I, you know, we, I think we've done this before, Counsel, with our cleaning services, I think about a year ago or so. And, but we couldn't find enough help and we kind of contracted out third party.
The difference between that and this is that the custodial staff last time was an actual company that we hired to come in and do the cleaning.
Yeah.
This one, what, these people would actually work with us and be considered employees with the city but not be employees with the city.
I, I, I don't have a problem with it. We already have the money budgeted, so it's an opportunity for like a probationary period, which we do anyway. And then it saves us money on their, I mean, I'm reading it here on the workman's comp and the insurance premiums.
So they're gonna observe our holidays and our work schedule and basically they're gonna bill us by employee per hour?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And we don't, we don't have to use it? We can use it? We got no terms?
No requirements of certain amount of expenditure?
We're a year of doing that.
Right. So, so meaning if you hire one of these guys and they're not working out, it's, you know, we can dust our hands.
Legitimately, I can call and tell them to call the individual and ask them to not report to work anymore and they replace them, or I can tell them, or however we want to work it. And like the mayor said, is if we decide that we don't like it, there's no obligation to this. We're not signing a contract saying we have to use it.
Yeah, you're not guaranteeing them that you're gonna employ any number of people at any given time, right?
It is, in my opinion, very beneficial for us for the turnover rate of the, how fast we can get somebody in the spot to actually fill the spot.
Well, it also gives you an opportunity to analyze how well it's working.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Probation period, yeah.
It's outsourcing the probationary period.
That's exactly right.
You feel like it's not working out for you, you just don't have to call them for help.
That's right.
It's just, yeah, we're just third partying in the probationary period. So I think it's a great idea, whoever, you know, George, whoever came up with the idea, Mayor.
There's a lot of parks to back around that.
I guarantee you that our benefits are more than what their, what their fee is. It would cost us more than their fee.
I honestly think that if we, if we're the guinea pigs and we get going on this, there's a lot of other departments that are gonna wanna follow suit when they see how fast we can fill positions.
Right.
And how fast and how we get to have that probationary period of whether we like the employee or not.
And have we vetted Long's? Like, we have other people that have used the company in the government system?
Oddly enough, my first two real career jobs outside of high school, I got through Long's.
Okay. Oh, so you have personal, okay, very good.
And so I, I have personally been through it and I, I know that Riviera Utilities used to use them, but because of workman's comp issues, they're not allowed to cover electrical work anymore. So they don't use it there anymore. But I think, I think the city of Foley and Gulf Shores both use them.
I mean, they've been around since I was a boy. Like, I can remember the men lining up at the door, asking mama, who, why are they all lining up?
It's a proven process.
They've, they've been around for a while, so.
It's a local family that, you know, it's nice to have that one.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Counsel, anybody have questions on this? How many, I have, how many are you thinking we're gonna pull in at a time?
So to start off with, I'm thinking two to start off. And let's see how, test the waters.
Yeah.
See how the process goes and go from there and then plan for maybe more. And like I said, other departments might like it and we might get on board with that to start off. But basically, our lawnmower operators and our entry level gardener positions and then our custodial staff would be the ones that we're, we're starting off pulling from those.
Sounds good.
And actually, oddly enough, right now, we're the closest to fully staffed. We've been in a long time and I think it's because I came up here to talk to y'all about this, but it'd be nice to have this as a backup for when we do need it.
Yeah, it's Murphy's Law.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, yeah, okay.
Do we, I guess, Council President, I want to ask the question. I'm looking at the resolution and it's pretty simple. Did we want to limit this to certain departments? I mean, just the, I mean, do you want to open that up to the whole city right now or just, do we want to limit that to certain departments?
Well, I don't-
Sounds like some of it's limited anyway because-
Yeah, I was about to say, per profession, you know.
The different departments will have to get with Long's to make sure that the different positions are covered under their workman's comp policy. But I do believe that there are a lot of opportunities throughout the different departments for, for positions that could go through there.
I, I just don't want us to get lazy and start using them when it's not necessary, though.
Right.
That's always the danger with these things. It's just something that somebody doesn't have to do and it gets to be convenient.
You mean overstaffing?
Well, not overstaffing, but not using the staff that may have time to do the interviews for a particular position. I mean, you get to certain positions, it's, they're not-
Well, that's, I would think that this would all be entry level positions. I would not think that-
Well, that's what I'm saying, but our resolution that you're not looking at, that I am, is just completely sky's the limit, wide open. Wild West out there. I'm just asking the council for fiduciary responsibility. Do we want to narrow the scope a little bit?
I understand.
I mean, if, if I could just have some input in that, I mean, obviously, I think there's only a few, a few departments that would probably benefit from this. I can see recreation possibly for grass mowing, those kind of things in Public Works.
Yeah.
I mean, if you'll leave it, if you'll put some trust in me and Hannah, we can manage that without having to limit in the resolution. I mean, our intent is not to use it depart, citywide. Our intent right now is to use it strictly for Public Works.
Would you consider limiting it to a certain pay grade?
I mean, we can, but I wouldn't want to also pigeonhole us in that either if we saw that they may have a candidate that came across that they saw that we had an opening for and they sent it to us and said, this person is really qualified for this position. I'd love for you to take a look at it. You know, and I, I just, again, I think that's something that internally we can manage and know that we're not gonna take advantage of that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the spirit of it is because of a lot of the attrition that we have as far as our work, workers are concerned, for whatever reasons in the government, and then just the lack of bodies, period, hands on deck. So I think if you start narrowing it, we're kind of getting close back to where we are. You know, I think the whole point of it is to kind of be able to pull from a place of a farming system.
I get the spirit, Counsel, but the first thing he said was that, you know, Public Works is in Public Works and it's only in that and it's only in this certain aspect of Public Works. I was, they were the ones that made it narrow and, uh.
Well, yeah, and that's all, our only intent right now is to use it in Public Works, is not to use it anywhere else. But again, Long's also, one of the things that they do is they have people come in that, say we have somebody who was in the water industry, they retired from malls, but they want to go back to work. They may go over to Long's and say, hey, I'd like to, I'm gonna, I'm a, I don't know, water level operator four or wastewater treatment plant operator four and I'm looking for a job. And then they get on our websites and they're like, oh, well, the city of Fairhope has one. We've been doing work with them. Why don't I call and see if they may be willing to try you out and see if you would work in that position? Those are the kind of things they do. They try to match you in those positions. So I wouldn't want to pigeonhole it to, to a certain pay grade just in case there was that opportunity for us to get a qualified candidate in another, in another position just because they sought us out, not necessarily because we seek them out. Does that make sense?
Right, but you're talking about, you're talking about two different things. She's saying that they also could be a headhunter as well.
No, I get that, but I don't want somebody coming to work here to test the water and leave whenever they want either. That's the, I mean, that's, that's, you know, you want them to work here or you want them to just come sample? If you get to a higher level, that's not, that's not people you typically are-
No, but from a headhunter position, yeah, it's, it, I don't think-
I must have heard something different.
Yeah.
If you're doing headhunter, that's more direct placement.
It is, more direct placement. It would be.
It's not a sample, so that's what I'm saying.
But again, I just wouldn't want to tie it to a pay grade.
They wouldn't be staying on their payroll.
Right.
They would come to work for us.
Correct. I just wouldn't want to pigeonhole it to a pay grade.
See how you like it and decide whether or not you want to stay. That's what I heard.
For the entry level, right?
For the entry level, yes.
Water operator four is not entry level.
That's, that's not entry level, but I'm, that would be the reverse effect, using it kind of like as a headhunter position, how Councilman Martin described it.
Yeah.
That's why I said I wouldn't want to tie it to a pay grade necessarily because if there is some opportunity to get some upper level positions, it just makes sense to be able to do that if you could.
So what would you, so Councilman Brill, what would you like to see?
Take the, take the absolute extreme then. You're hiring a city engineer. Do you go to a temp agency and say, we want to try this person out and if it don't work out? There is a limit to what you're, you want to do.
Not for that level of a position, not for that level of position. That's why I was using-
That's why there's a limit. It's somewhere between the highest and the lowest. There's a limit.
Yeah, but I, so from what I'm hearing, from what I'm hearing is that, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding as well. We're not even there right now, but if we get to that place, these are all devil's advocate stuff. So, but right now, we're talking about entry level. But if you leave the resolution as it is, what you're concerned about is it being opened up to the city and that would be more professional or direct job descriptions.
Just-
And what the mayor is saying is even at that level, it wouldn't be temp service. It would be more, they have access to people that may be looking for a job at those levels and they would come in.
Then the resolution would be, I mean, it would be-
Null and void.
Null and void if they're just sending somebody to work.
Just, just leave it for, just leave it entry level Public Works.
Okay.
It's fine.
I mean, we can, okay.
Not gonna say keep arguing.
I mean, it does it, yeah. Counsel, anybody else on this, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the resolutions. So it's just, I mean, it's just like, it's-
Resolutions says temporary employees to supplement the existing workforce.
Right. So we would have to add to it if we-
You'd have, you'd have to-
Just with that, you would have to add to get a direct person.
Direct placement.
That's, that's correct. And they're gonna, but it's fine the way it is for us, for what we're gonna do right now, it's fine the way it is. If we have to come back, we will.
Yeah, for right now, it's limiting, as it's written, temporary workers.
That's correct.
But what Jack is saying is he wants some type of detail in there saying that temporary worker could only be at so level cap. And then after that, we wouldn't have a, I mean, that's, I'm just-
No, no, I get it, but I think, I mean, my question would be, how much, how many high pay grade employees are you gonna get that are temporary?
I, I say the same.
I would say none.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
But then it doesn't hurt to put it in, it doesn't-
That's why I would not, I would just say temporary and not put a pay grade attached to it. You don't have to.
Well, I was, you know, just shooting from the hip when I say pay grade. You could do whatever you want. You could give a department or something, I just-
Yeah, I mean, I would think that ultimately, obviously depending on how successful this is, which I imagine works very good, it would be helpful not only in your department, but maybe to the side. That'll limiting it, we're probably gonna come back at some point.
Expand it.
Yeah.
Which goes back to the first concern I had was that we get too used to it and we're not doing enough effort to hire people permanently.
Well, but if we find success in this sort of a honey hole for, for employees, then why not continue to fish in that pond until, you know, we find success?
Yeah, but, hold on, but unless I'm confused, which happens a lot, this, this temporary is not meaning, it's temporary on our behalf, meaning these children, these people are trying to have a full time if we so suggest. You know what I mean? I don't think they're coming with the mind of temporary.
That's true.
Okay, so that, that makes, that puts us in control, that, whether it's temporary or perpetual, you know, that, I think, so if I read, and I'm not the smartest guy in the book, but I think that's more where we get control. It's because they're coming as a temporary, but we are the ones that's doing the hiring or allowing a temporary position. But if they come under the probationary spirit that we're hoping and they're very good workers, then we make the decision to make them permanent employees.
I'm just picking at it, but-
Yeah, 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 we're just talking through-
One of the things also is that, you know, for the time that I've been on the council, we've been, and, and part of it's just matter of the labor market. I mean, the labor market's just tight. It's tough to get people to do, for any job of all skill levels. But, you know, we, we've, we have been trending more and more and more towards farming stuff out that we've historically done. And that's all I'm, kind of what I'm cautioning against is let's not make it so easy always that we forget to do the job of, you know, vetting people some, hiring people some, keeping things in the house when we can. That's kind of all I'm, that's kind of what I'm-
Yeah, I mean, I-
Just cautioning, that's not a huge, that's not a red flag, that's just a little, just be cognizant of it.
I do believe that the, our NeoGov program that we're going through now is doing an extremely good job of finding the hiring people. I think our, our, our platform that's getting the information out there for the people searching is dramatically better.
And it's not just, it's not just HR, that's not just hiring, that's just, that's everything. That's from doing work on our facilities. That's, that's everything.
So I, I want to add something else as far as this is concerned with running a business or, or, or that. You know, I, and I know with inflation, these prices have gone up, but, you know, every time you fire and hire, it's at least 30K. At least 30K to refire and hire. It costs the company at least 30K in the process to do that. And it may be more than that nowadays, I'm not sure, but I know at one point that was the number. My point is with this, you're not doing that same front load when you hire somebody from NeoGov and you're putting all that investment in them. You're getting a period of time where you're saving those funds and you get a discretionary period to where you make the decision whether this guy or this gal is a good person or a good fit, and then that money kicks in. You see what I'm saying? So you're actually on a safer trail, you know, I mean, monetary wise, fiduciary wise, in my opinion, on, on, on this particular track as far as the, the people that are Long's is concerned. I mean, that's one good thing I see about it, you know?
It definitely will save some money.
Yeah.
On, on, if they're, if they're, if they're only here a short.
That's what I'm saying, because we get some people and we have, you know, boom, they turn over and we just, that's another 30K that we're using to fire, hire somebody else, you know?
Basically, let me, let me have, basically, this is just another method to expand our opportunity.
Yes.
To land more employees, not more, but expand out to where we can find.
Absolutely.
A better opportunity to get, you know.
And faster.
And a good fit.
I mean, all this other stuff's kind of getting a little deep in the weeds as far as I'm concerned. This is just mainly a process in order to expand our opportunities to find, uh, people when we need them.
Yes, expand the opportunity.
As opposed to just one sense that we have. Because basically, the way I understand how this works, they work for the company, Long Company for X number period of time.
Seven hundred, the contract is.
They can't even come over to us until that timeframe's over.
There is a buy, you can't, if the employee is just absolutely outstanding and for some reason you want to go ahead and bring them on, you can buy them out.
Yeah.
But the idea is to go through the end of the contract.
Right, and then they, they handle all the issues and all the problems until they come, until we decide, yeah, this is who we'd like and not. But I mean, as far as I'm concerned, this is just a better, a bigger opportunity to get a bigger pond as we were talking about and to fish in. Everything else is kind of irrelevant to me. We, we can work that out, those details out as we go along. Get back on the simple track.
Go back to that simple resolution. When we see somebody and they're a hundred hours in, we, we pay them another 520 hours to the temp service to get them in?
Well, I mean, again, the way I understand it, with these services, you have to, you're buy, when they send you an employee, that particular employee's working for them. They handle the hours, they handle, you can't, you don't hire them until the time limit or you buy, or you buy them out.
He said you can buy them out.
That's what I'm saying. One of the two has to happen.
Yes.
But by then, they've handled all the issues and all the problems, and then we find out, well, this guy's really good, we'd like to have him. He is well worth what we need, or no.
That's right.
And we don't have the general problems of get them in, train them, and then it works out, and then they, they decide, like you said. A minute ago, it's like, well, they, they get tired, they want to leave. Well, they can do that no matter what they do. Who's hiring?
Great conversation.
It has, there are things that can be abused. You could get, all right, let's hire this person, they're great. You hire them, you pay off the temp service, probably that amount per hour for the remaining hours of the 720 would probably be what you owe them. But now your costs go up again, be, now you're double dipping because you have to give that person your benefits.
But that's something that I, I can't really speak of. I never saw any real prices or costs.
So the, I thought there was a price sheet attached.
You can just send it to me, I, I'm not, but yeah, I never, I didn't. Yeah, there's not. So that's one thing that I, I would, I, I have to, I couldn't really speak on what, what Jack and Boone are talking about right now because I don't know the numbers yet, you know, so I'm, I'm thinking that those numbers probably will come back to us. Oh my God, I can't see it. Yeah, I can't see it.
Maybe your eyes.
Thank you, babe. I'm sorry, Joe.
I thought, I thought she was shocked when you saw it.
No, no.
Seven hundred and twenty hours.
Yeah, oh yeah, give it to Jack, yes, fine.
I thought you were looking at the same thing.
No, no, that's okay.
I don't see.
Yeah.
Obviously, what, what their rates would be, but what about it? The length of the compensation is 720 hours. Yeah, I guess the question is, what, if we decide to buy them out, what's.
So you pay, so basically.
It looks like they just prorate it to the 720 based on section 10.
We, we met, we met with them again today and the buyout is the bill amount. So $15 an hour is what we would pay, 50% is the markup. We would pay the 50% for the remainder of the period, so not the 2250 or whatever the bill rate is, just the 750 per hour.
That's what I said earlier.
Yeah.
The $7 is what I said, times whatever's left between 720 and when you buy them out. You pay them 620, times.
I don't want to hire them out too early unless you just think they're fantastic.
That's all I'm saying. If we make the resolution too simple, there's not, there may be.
Well, what we're talking about, God bless you. I mean, that's why we're talking about it, you know? Yeah, that was something that I was gonna ask, were the numbers, because I didn't see the numbers, but, but yeah, so, but I don't think this resolution, I mean, we can tighten it up as far as we won't buy them out.
Yeah, we can't change their rates though, so that doesn't change.
And that's why it's on the work session agenda and not the council agenda. We pulled it from the council agenda to put it on the work session agenda so y'all could have that input and get with Lisa on how you want the resolution to reach.
Sure what, what you, I mean, you can put in there, you can't hire them before they've worked X amount. But I mean, I, I don't even know that you want to restrict it even that much, because I mean, you got, you get somebody in the door. I mean, odds are, you're not gonna hire them after week one. You're gonna want to see more than that. You're probably gonna want to see a month or two months worth of work, so by then, you're, before you're even willing to hire somebody away, you're gonna be close to that 720 hours anyway.
So, well, yeah, so, well, I mean, what we could do is say that we would not hire them less than X amount of months. You know, maybe 90 days, you know, that's three months, you know, we could do something like that. I don't know what those numbers look like really, but we do the math, you know, and see if that's, you know.
I would argue against my own argument and say, I don't know, you find somebody that's outstanding, you may not want to.
That's, that's my point is.
That's what I'm saying, we could tighten it up.
But I was just throwing out things just to say, think about it, is all.
No, I mean, look, you know, there, there's no doubt, any, any, any.
Don't listen to me, I'm just throwing out arguments.
Yeah, I mean, any resolution you put out there can, can, can be tightened up. But, but I mean, we've got to have an expectation of some common sense level approach to applying it and executing it, which I think the simpler the better is typically my approach, and I think that's where we are on this one, and, you know.
I think the mayor actually said it best in the beginning, was like, just, you know, trust them to make those decisions because, you know, you're not gonna, you know, hire somebody and 200 hours in, pay them, I hope not. Two, you know, pay them 500 hours times the 950 difference.
In other words, we've been here 15 minutes and you've talked yourself out of it, right?
Yeah.
Talked myself back into it.
We, we, I, I would, I, I would really, I would want to trust these, you know, that they would do the right thing. I think it will come back to us. If anything would change, it would come back to us and, and we could make those, those decisions as a, as a body.
George, I think it sounds like a great idea.
Ah, yeah, all right. I, I, I do too, man, I do too. And I think, uh, we can kick some of those details around as we go through and learn from it.
Well, yeah, but you know what's gonna happen is we all say we like it, just me, me included, and in two weeks, it's gonna be on the agenda and it's gonna be a simple resolution. We're gonna say, did we really, did we really think about that enough?
Well, we, I think we just did. We spent 30 minutes on it.
We thought enough about it, but you talked yourself out of it.
Maybe not.
Whatever works.
We thought that.
I think we did. I think we, we became devil's advocate and we, we walked all the way through that thing, undressed it. All we needed is some Barry White right now. That's it. Anyway, all right, okay, George. Anybody else, council, we got any more questions?
We're not.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, George. Oh man, that was fun. That was fun. Anyway, okay, guys. Uh, agenda item number three is a discussion of the civic center and park revisions to ordinance number 1575 and resolution number 3039-18.
All right, good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Um, a few months back, we briefly discussed this on a work session, and so we took a little bit of the feedback we got from y'all. And we're coming back with you tonight. Um, I think y'all have all of our corrections or revisions in front of you. What we are adding is in the yellow highlighted and what we are taking away is in the, um, red. So we can go through park ordinance first. 1575, so, um, here, one of the main things we did on permitted use, you'll see the second line. We have added that caveat that organizations and individuals may only request the park rental two times per calendar year. Um, so what we kind of did is look at this and we're, you know, adapting to our changing communities' needs, making sure we're looking at security and safety, um, and also just cleaning up some old verbiage when y'all are looking into these ordinances. So we've also put in there a subletting clause. Anybody who's coming in, in any of those three parks listed above, um, we are gonna put in there that they are not allowed to sublet. So you'll see that revision added in the yellow right there. Um, on page two, you'll see that we've changed the cancellation policy from 30 to 60 days. What we found is obviously when somebody comes to us with a cancellation, it's really hard for us to either resell that date or have it open for someone else to come along, so we have bumped that from 30 days to 60. When you go down to permit fees, we are increasing that permit fee for $20 for the first four hours and $100 for each additional hour.
Took $200.
Excuse me, did I misspeak? Sorry, um, 200. And then one thing we wanted to get direction on too, we had spoke about the resident, non-resident rate. Here is where we would insert if y'all would like us to maybe put a 200 resident rate and a 400 non-resident rate, and then keep that $100 for each additional hour. So if that's something that y'all want to kind of pivot to, that's direction we would want from y'all, um, moving forward for this and as we move on to some of our facilities, um, throughout the city. Insurance requirements, that we've added all in the yellow. That is basically, um, our, our insurance minimum requirements that they all have to have turned in, so that has been added to the ordinance. It wasn't currently in there, so y'all see that there. One thing we've also added, um, under vehicular traffic is food trucks prohibited in park areas. We already don't allow any kind of vehicular traffic in the parks, so we added that in there as well. Cleaned up some grammatical errors. Our cleaning deposit, I will tell you, historically, we have, I believe, only refunded one, or didn't, excuse me, did not refund a cleaning deposit for one renter or contract holder. So we are gonna just leave that at a $500 cleaning up deposit refundable instead of trying to limit it to less than 50 participants or more than 50 participants, because a lot of times that's kind of a figure that those renters may or may not know. Down under tents staging and inflatables, we want to make sure that they are being secured via water, uh, sandbags or water barrels. Obviously, we have a lot of underground utility lines, so we added that.
There are no inflatables, right?
And we put in there, inflatables are prohibited.
That's where it's at, yeah.
As well. Lastly, um, we added, um, some code of Alabama, um, federal, state and local laws at the very end of our park ordinance. And that is pretty much it on that, so at this time, if y'all have any comments on that, I'll be glad to take notes and make any edits or feedback.
I, I would be in favor of, of having a discounted rate for the citizens and a different rate for non-citizens. I just think, you know, first, first priority ought to be to people that live here.
Paige, on that note, I did, I had a note, I thought 400 was a little bit much for a non-resident, but I did jot down 300.
Okay.
I spoke to the mayor briefly about that. We were going over that and, um, but that's, that could be debated for a half an hour, Kevin, if you'd like. I do, I do think also that that should, we should define what is a resident or non-resident there. You know, well, we're gonna go with 36532 area code, or you have a utility service, or we're gonna say city limits.
Or PO box.
City limits is usually how we, um, do it at the rec center currently. So anybody who's getting that resident, non-resident rate at the Fairhope Rec Center, I believe, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is.
Basically, we're collecting adware, alarm tax. I, I think that's fair.
And I mean, we can easily, um, verify that because garbage customers are, are, um, within our city limits.
Right.
Outside of that is not, so.
And you need to be consistent.
So what about, what about, what about the little holes and pockets that we know are right here in the city, but they're considered outside the city limits? Like, are we?
And it's not, they were saying that they're not gonna be able to use it, it's just. Yeah, or you can look at it, glass is half full, the citizens get a lower rate, which is discount, discount for living here. For a $100 discount, that sounds, sounds like a deal.
Paige, I had one more, uh, thing that, that I was looking at. Said food trucks are prohibited in park areas that are designated under this ordinance, which I don't, I don't have any problem with that at all. However, uh, if my memory serves me correct, don't I see food trucks down at the pier during 4th of July?
We have, um, one, I believe, current franchise agreement that's down there, um, Mike's Italian Ice.
I, I remember that.
The other, the other vendors do pay a permit, a vendor permit fee for my 4th of July. So for us, for a city of Fairhope event, we do have a special vendor fee that they do pay for, and we limit it to basically.
Kind of like arts and crafts.
Correct.
Food vendors.
So they pay for electric, they pay.
I just didn't want to see it seem as too hypocritical to the people that want to rent that and say you can't do it, but yet the city can do it down there.
Yeah, so what we're saying is, with this change, I'm just making sure I understand, that if you have an event that fits into this new ordinance, food trucks now are not allowed at that particular event, if y'all accept it. And there's no.
In the park areas.
In the park areas. And does that, is that any vendor, not just food? Okay, just food trucks. I'm just clarifying, okay. Right, yeah. Well, you know, they, I just know that when they have a couple of these events, for instance, the Juneteenth event, they have, that's a part of that with, I know Mike's comes down and I think there's one other truck that comes down. You know, so, and I just want to make sure, because that would change that.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to have the food trucks.
They can't do it because they don't have a franchise agreement.
That's right, that's right. And like ESRT, for instance, when they do the, the bluff, um, performance, the play, they, they sell their own concessions. They'll have like candy bars and cokes, those kind of things. If you wanted to go get Domino's pizza and set up a food table to sell it, you can do that, but you just can't have the food truck in the park.
I just want to make sure I'm clear and clarified so we'll know, okay, all right.
The organization needs to be coordinating that versus it having an outside entity come in to do it.
Okay.
It's per, it's four hours for the one fee, because remember we had the issue with the tennis center with, you know, number X dollars, with up to a maximum of four hours for tournament fees, but this is, whatever it is, 200 or 300, four hours you get for that, so 50 bucks an hour, is that right?
Right at 50.
Yes, yes.
200 per hour, or just the first four hours.
For the first four, and then 100 for any additional hour.
So individual hour is $50, the total of that is, is the 200.
There's no, 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 the minimum will be four hours.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, if you're renting the park for 30 minutes, you're paying $200.
Four hours for that. Now, the next question, you could get more than four?
You can.
Okay, that's, but you would pay another 200.
Right now, it's $75 an hour, and we're just bumping it to $100 an hour for additional after that four hour mark. And we're talking setup, event and breakdown, so you gotta think about that, because we've had events in the past where, like, oh, my event's only four hours long. Well, yeah, but you gotta think setup and breakdown, so make sure you're including that all within your fee.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah, got you. Yeah, and I guess we will broadcast this out. We have a lot of events, so people will be.
Is everybody good with $300 for the non-resident rate? Yes, okay.
Yeah, 300. Yeah, three hundred. It was four hundred. We knocked it back down to three hundred. Yeah, I think that's feasible.
And we'll keep that hourly, or additional, excuse me, that additional hundred dollars will stay the same. It's just that initial.
So, will we have a different rate for the additional hours for, for city limits and non-residents?
No.
Okay.
It's easy to keep them in hundred-dollar increments.
Okay.
Yeah. If y'all don't have any other comments, we can move over to Civic Center Complex, or, okay. All right. So, moving on over to Civic Center. Again, we have added on there the insurance policy coverage minimums. So, you'll see that there. Added. Again, cancellation policies, cohesively, we have bumped everybody from a thirty-day to a sixty-day cancellation policy. On E, we have removed, in years past, we have put this in our ordinance that after five consecutive years, they should have the right for advanced bookings. We have removed this. I know there's some concerns with folks who have booked with us, you know, years and years, and I will say, you know, with, with y'all also making a point to not add anything to our books, you know, to keep everything where we are right now. We, we generally know when those events are held, so we're not going to sell this out from anybody, you know. We just want to make sure that the monkey's on their back to get their paperwork in in time. We want to make sure that we're not sitting here holding out for weeks and weeks and weeks of the date. And usually, what I will say is my staff, as well as myself, keeping pretty good contact with these folks. So, we'll, if we haven't received any paperwork from them, we'll usually give them a little courtesy call, "Hey, guys, we're like within the twelve-week window," or whatever week window it is that we, I say twelve-week. I don't believe there's a, a window for Civic Center rentals, but for parks there, or, excuse me, for streets there is. But usually, we'll let them know, "Hey, we haven't received anything from y'all. Is, is there something that's changed? Is there something that's going on?" And we, we can kind of work it out from there. Again, it's just a suggestion.
I have a problem with that, and I spoke to you about that earlier. I would prefer to leave that in there simply because we do have a lot of organizations who routinely book, and I know y'all want to put the monkey off on their back, but what's going to happen is they're going to be booked on top of, and I'm going to end up getting the call. And then, we're going to have two people that want the same date. And I would prefer to leave that in there, so staff is clearly directed that anybody who has consecutively rented that facility for five years, that they have, they're able to keep that date.
And Paige, I want to pile on there. And I, and full disclosure, Mayor and I, actually, we went through this earlier today, and that one kind of jumped out at me, and, and then she did say, I said, "I don't know about that." But, but if you look at it, if you keep it in, it says they have the right for advanced booking, provided they get a completed application and deposit paid prior to the requested dates. So, you, you do have a little leeway, I guess, to, you do have a little bit of a stick there. Because if you don't have that application and deposit, then they don't have that right. And I understand, you're going to get, you know, the big organizations are going to say, "But we get it every year. I've just been busy, you know, had a grandchild. I couldn't get that application to you," and you're waiting and waiting and waiting. And I, and I.
And there's probably less than ten. I mean, I would say Mardi Gras, Kids Market, I mean, it's probably less than ten organizations who book something routinely every year at the same time. And I get wanting to stop handholding people and make them accountable for what they're doing. But at the end of the day, I mean, people have gotten used to these events. They know they're going to be in there.
I think it says it gives them the right to advance booking. It doesn't say it gives them the right to short.
That's right. They have, no, they have to advance book it, and they have to go ahead and pay their fees.
If we cross this out, what are we, what are we changing exactly? Are we saying that we don't want them to advance book, Paige?
I believe it's just over, maybe advanced booking, I guess, insinuates over a year out, maybe? I mean, I guess it's up for discussion.
Well, I do, that is a good question.
I mean, what does advanced booking consider?
Define that.
I don't think we've ever let them book more than a year in advance, but we've just made sure we kind of pencil in that date for them, so they, so nobody books on top of it, basically. They have first right of refusal.
Yeah, first right of refusal. But so, if we, if we, if we take this out, and we know traditionally someone's used this ten, twenty, thirty years, is that, we're taking away their first right of refusal? Is that what we're trying to do?
That's correct.
That's what we're asking.
It's not necessary. I, I mean, I don't think that's.
My, my only question would be, is to when would we relinquish the date? If, if they're hemming and hawing and ask, you know, and we've asked, and.
So, that's what I mean by, define advance. What would you, what would be something that helps efficiency in your, in your, you know?
That would be my only thing, would just be to.
How far? What, what are you, on the top of your?
Ninety days?
Well, sixty's the current for, for everybody to book.
Sixty?
Hundred and twenty?
So, I'd say, yeah, I mean.
Three months?
I mean, six.
Six months?
I mean, I would.
Yeah, if anybody wants to chime in for a minute.
Yeah, not to put you on, I mean, what do you think would be?
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah. Because I want to define what advanced booking is.
It has nothing, as long as we get a deposit and the money, we're going to book them regardless. And we forecast everything out as well, just because of that, but we don't want to be hung up with no application, no deposit, and we're chasing that.
Okay, so let's, so when you say, when you advance book, you must have your application and your deposit if you choose to advance book. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir. And as long as we have that.
So, that's a different thing. That's not a problem. That's why we talk about it. So, I don't think that's a, I don't, me personally, don't think that's a problem. If they're going to advance book, and you know you're going to do it, then have everything in a row, so they'll, you know.
I think, too, it's probably an enforcement issue. These folks have probably gotten a little bit complacent, knowing that the books, the date's going to be held for them, so they don't get their application in, they don't get their money in.
That's what I'm saying.
But, again, I mean, if they know they have a, you know, ninety days, six months, or even six months prior to their event, if they don't have a book, then it's, it can go to somebody else. But that's an enforcement issue also. I mean.
I think that more them giving the application and some type of payment is more the issue.
No, 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 it is, because, I mean, it's just a matter of dragging your feet, because it's our, it's always been hell, you know it is.
Right.
But if you have some, if you have some deadline, I mean, you know, that, yeah, I've got the date, but if I don't get my application and my, my payment booked within six months of my event, they're going to give it away.
That's right. Is that, I mean, we can tighten that up.
We forecast it out.
Yeah, we can tighten that up.
Is a hundred and twenty days reasonable to you, too? Or is that too short?
Six months even.
Hundred and twenty days, four months.
Four months.
And let me tell you why. I'm not certain, but I've been told that some of these mystic organizations dues are due in the fall, and, you know, the ball is in January, February, about four months.
About four months, right. So, let's do.
How much money does it cost to rent the Civic Center for them?
I'm sorry?
How much does it cost for a mystic organization to rent the Civic Center?
I guess it would depend if they're nonprofit or profit, and if.
Most are nonprofit.
Mardi Gras.
They're all nonprofit.
Oh, they, they pay, they're usually paying right after the event.
Yeah.
For the next year.
Yes, sir. Yeah. They're not, nobody's, there's no intent there to block anybody out.
No, no, no. It's just a matter of locking in the, locking in the rental. Right. I get it. Yeah. I mean, I think that's fair. That's a win-win for everybody, you know?
And again, these are.
If we define it.
These are all suggestions. We're open to any kind of direction from y'all. So, I mean, we can, again, take, bring it completely back.
No, I, I think it's, I think we just put some, some definitions on it. I lost my pen. I think we'll be good, yeah.
Okay.
What we're hearing.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think four months is reasonable.
Okay. We can reword that. And recent, yeah. Okay. All right. Moving down, we've reworded that number four, to groups may use the complex facility for meetings, conventions, centers, et cetera, but will not be permitted to use the facility on a regular weekly basis. Let's see here. Moving down to auditorium rates. So, to give y'all a little bit of a backstory, in two thousand and eighteen, we did do an increase in price on our main auditorium. I believe it went from four eighty-five to five eighty-five, and our hourly rate went from twenty dollars an hour to fifty dollars an hour. So, again, we're here, and internal, internally, we have kind of come together, and, and we really feel like those rates are pretty, pretty fair. Do y'all all have that? Okay, okay. So, the five eighty-five, now, again, if we're going the route resident, non-resident, we did look up, you know, inflation from two thousand and eighteen to current day, and that's about a little over seven hundred dollars. So, again, if we wanted to do the five eighty-five for resident and maybe make the non-resident rate different, we could differentiate that with that over seven hundred dollar figure, and again, leave that fifty dollar per hour rate the same. We did increase the lobby council chambers and Del Shamps rooms slightly, so y'all see that there.
Paige, do you, what do you think about doing a seven hundred dollar non-resident rate? Is that, just do it at seven hundred dollars flat?
I would have to go back and look at that exact number that we calculated, but, yeah, I would say around that would probably be pretty accurate.
Paige, didn't you say we raised it in six years ago to five eighty-five, and the inflation adjusted rate would be over seven hundred? That's for, that's for anyone.
That would be for the resident. That would be for anyone. However, we did adjust the rate, the hourly rate, from twenty to fifty, which was probably more than inflation from that point. So, we kind of feel like that justifies both of those. If not, we're, again, welcome for any kind of, any kind of feedback that, that y'all would be willing to go to. If we, if we feel like, I mean, we feel like those rates are pretty fair. I mean, for example, Michael and I were having this conversation a few days ago. I think it's a kids' clothing, or, or one of our resellers who comes and rents the facility for, you know, five or six days from sunup to sundown. I mean, they're paying like over five thousand dollars. So, I mean, we feel like that's probably a pretty fair rate.
I mean, the consignment shop, yeah. And, and there are five oh-one C threes as well, are they not? Or they're private?
I think they're for profit.
Private.
We, so, do y'all have any, any direction on the resident, non-resident five eighty-five or fifty dollar an hour rate? Any feelings either way?
Yeah, so, so the five eighty-five, just for clarity, is for anybody right now. Resident or non-resident?
Correct.
Is that what we're saying? But we're, we're thinking about maybe differentiating that?
Seven hundred for non-resident, plus fifty dollars an hour after five p.m.? I, I mean, I think that seems reasonable.
We did, oh, go ahead.
Counsel, any problems with the, with the differentiation between?
I don't have a problem with that at all. You know, I guess the only thing that's going through my mind is still.
The base rate.
Once you give the five oh-one C threes or any other Cs, you know, the fifty percent off, the price becomes extremely low.
Three fifty.
And look, a nonprofit doesn't go to a restaurant, have a fundraiser, and say, "We want the food fifty percent off." It just doesn't happen. You know, these, these rates are still pretty inexpensive. So, just, I'm just throwing something out there, guys, and, and seeing if it sticks. Again, is that maybe we only give the nonprofit rate to people, you know, to municipal, to five oh-one C threes that reside in the corporate limits? I'm just a thought. I mean, because these rates are very low.
I mean, if you look at other neighboring municipalities, I mean, yes, we are probably the lowest.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say that.
Daphne is pretty low, too, though. I think that Daphne, it's like four hundred.
They just did a rate increase.
Oh, because it was like only four hundred. And I know Loxley is really low.
I believe their main auditorium, now, don't quote me, but it was like two thousand dollars.
It used to be twelve hundred years.
Maybe I'm thinking about Loxley. Somebody is, is a very reasonable rate, and I.
Carrows.
Besides us, besides us. Loxley's like four fifty, three hundred. Yeah, so, but. They would keep it reason, that, okay. Because I was like, yeah, we're not the lowest, that's for sure. Because I, I had a part of a, a, a project down there.
Probably comparable facility-wise to Foley's, more than anybody else, as I would say.
And what's their price?
I don't even know what their price is. With their, but we're probably closer to them, like, in facilities than anybody else.
Right.
I would have to, I would have to research and see what they're.
Probably similar to them. Probably.
I mean, the thing about, you know, I guess, the question that I would have, just business-wise, is what do the numbers look like? You know, I mean, are we trying to make money off of this? Are we just trying to get in the marketplace? Meaning, are we trying to get where the market is? Are we actually, how many people from the outside do we really have that are coming to rent our facility? And we, are we wanting more, you know, to attract more, or are we just, you know what I mean?
I mean, we, I think with the staff we have right now, I mean, we could, there's a tiny bit of our calendar year that's probably slower. Our summer months are usually our slower months here at the Civic Center. Now, the city of Daphne has a larger building, and they have more staff, but they're turning it around a lot more than we are. But, I mean, with that being said, you know, for that rate, you're also getting tables, chairs, a lot of times, set up, you know. I mean, so, you're, you're getting a pretty good bargain, a pretty good bang for your buck.
Yeah, but I would think we're not, I, I mean, yeah, I would think we're not trying to entice more. I think we've got all we can say, grace over now, and, and.
I mean, we are really heavy on events. I mean, and our annual contract vendors, I mean, that are coming in for, you know, the doll shows and the kids' markets and the expos, I mean, they're year after year coming back. I mean, we, we really haven't, I think we talked about the antique show as one of the only ones we've really kind of lost in the last few years. And so, I, I would think we're pretty steady as the ones we have kept. But yes, I mean, there's not too much in our calendar year, especially with things going on here, meetings going on. I mean, a lot of times, the city is, is utilizing the Del Shamps rooms or the lobbies for different things. So, I don't know if that quite answers your question, but.
I mean, I was trying to see, would it make a difference, a significant difference, if we differentiated and had two separate fees?
And y'all can think on it, and we can come back to it. We can just, you know, circle back.
In the past, we had two separate fees, and we dropped the two separate fees, just because it got to be too confusing to try to figure out who was in the city limits, who wasn't. And a lot of times, what people will do is they'll find somebody in the city to just do the application for them. So, that's when we did away with that differentiation. But, again, it, it could deter people from outside the area from, you know, wanting to rent the Civic Center. I, I think probably that's more of a Nick Center issue than it is a Civic Center issue with weddings and stuff, because we've become such a wedding destination. And I think just for, you know, wanting to make sure that you're being good stewards of your facilities, that that differentiation would probably be more important at the Nick Center than it would be here. But maybe just to keep it consistent, you go ahead and establish a resident, non-resident rate, so you can do it at your other facilities.
We'll come back.
Okay.
We'll think about it.
We, okay, so moving on, we have, like I said, increased all of those rooms slightly. We've also upped our hourly charge on recognized city holidays. Again, if we're having to bring folks in on a recognized city holiday, we'll be paying for that holiday, and also paying them for the time worked. On B, we did, consistent with the Nick Center, did put an event breakdown and cleanup at twelve a.m. closing. On other fees for equipment and incidental fees, we did slight increases on that. We took out the VCR rental. We were hoping that folks wouldn't bring their VCRs to us for playing. And we've also taken out our PNO as well, because it's not tuned on a, on a regular basis, and it's truly, for us, it's not worth folks renting to, to be able to have that, that up and running. So, we have, we have struck that. Just, we're going to keep on moving. Okay, for eight, speaking on the Fairhope Public Schools and Thomas Hospital. So, there's a standalone ordinance for that, excuse me, resolution for that, forty-eight seventy-one dash twenty-three, and ordinance fourteen eighty-six for Fairhope Public Schools and Thomas Hospital. Our general renter doesn't really need all of that explanation. So, we have removed that. So, it just, we'll say on there, you know, that they need to see resolution. Let's see, the number nine has not changed. Going into rules and regulations, we're just putting some. Going into rules and regulations, we're just putting some safety measures in here for fire and exit lanes always be open. Cleaning up some of this in here that says facilities management across the board. We put on here for priority of the parking lot of the Civic Center. Obviously now here, down here with a lot of traffic on North Section, they really don't have exclusive right of this parking lot. And as well with our contract with the University of South Alabama College of Nursing, we put on there they have priority of the parking lot. Law enforcement personnel, we have cleaned that up. Obviously, any event where alcohol is present or any function which security is deemed necessary by the city of Fairhope, they will have to have law enforcement personnel. Again, cleaned up where it says banquet manager to facilities manager. And we've cleaned up some of our decorations and I won't bore y'all with all of that, but you can obviously read through. We've also kind of condensed down here for the, that we comply with the Alabama Department of Health guidelines. Kind of removed some of that language on very specific verbiage on cleaning pots and pans.
Somebody actually tried to paint?
Yes, we do, we do have that happen quite often. We added in here for licensed catering service with a current business license and health permit. Moving down, for garbage and debris, we really didn't add much there. We've added in here, they will need permission from us if they require or bringing in any kind of special power, appliance with special power requirements or a cooking apparatus other than anything provided by the city of Fairhope. We've removed that $30 per hour charge required for stage lights and operator. That really, we, they are already paying an AV equipment fee, so we're not really having somebody that's going to be running the AV equipment from start to finish. Usually those recitals or ESRT, they're bringing their own sound and AV folks in, so. That has been removed. Again, we removed the piano up there. Cleaned up some of that verbiage with banquet manager. Added in there, we had had some issues with people dragging things across the floor and putting damage to the, both the NIC Center and the Civic Center. So we were kind of cohesive and added that to both of these ordinances. And of course, added a caveat in here for e-cigarettes vaping and smokeless tobacco. As well as added that code of Alabama federal, state and local law at the very end. So is there anything, any questions y'all have for the Civic Center complex, other than the rates?
No, but I, I do think, I think these changes look great. I do think we're missing a money-making opportunity to rent for $10 a person, a dry erase marker to draw on whatever you want on the face of any of your elected officials out there. Get your picture made with your artwork and then erase it and start over. Taste, tastefully done.
Go back to the fallacy period of our development. You know, we're.
A hundred percent. Some adults that wanted to do that also.
Anything else you can think of or would like to add?
No, I, I just would ask that possibly, when you do the nonprofit and you incorporate it into the fee, if you just look at the, whether or not you want to individualize that, if it is nonprofit, do they still get the resident rate or non-resident rate? Because they're already getting such a discount, you know, make it fair for everybody. Does that make sense?
So you're saying?
Yeah, maybe we just, I mean, yeah. So, so you get, you get the resident rate and the nonprofit rate, you're getting a double discount.
I mean, that's, I mean, you're kind of cutting yourself off there.
Right. So you're saying if you're non-resident or, or you're.
Or just have a, or, or just come up with a nonprofit rate, period. Nonprofits pay X, whether they're city nonprofits or non-city nonprofits.
Right.
We do, we do, but they're still going to get the half off, say if they come in their nonprofit, plus they're a resident.
Then, then they're getting the half price off of a different number.
And if we want to leave it the same, that's, you know.
I think, yeah, what Jay's saying is just, you just put in a whole schedule of fees for that.
Just a, just a straight rental fee for nonprofit.
Whether you're residential or non? Because that, that's what he's.
Our, our nonprofit is a standalone ordinance, I believe.
Oh, is it? That's different.
It does not, if you're a nonprofit, it does not matter if you're residential or non-residential.
Correct.
That's what they're saying. So, so which rate would you go?
I just threw that out there as a thought.
So do we need to increase the rate, basically? And then the nonprofits paying a little bit more?
So, yeah. So the, yeah, so the nonprofit ordinance just gives them 50% off of whatever the applicable rate is. And the question is, what is the rate? And I would say.
You're renting the whole Civic Center for less than $300.
And also, that nonprofit ordinance is for parks, streets, Civic Center, NIC Center? So that's all your facilities.
Were the add-ons, though, for the nonprofits, they may not have been discounted, were they? Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, the add-on, you'd have y'all this à la carte. Those are not 50% off. It's only, so if you were looking at that, you'd only have to look at the base rate.
Right, right.
Because it's under rental rates in the ordinance resolution, so that's where the catch is. And that's something that needs to be discussed too, possibly.
So it's the whole.
So I think, I think, yeah, we would have to come up with a, a set fee for nonprofits.
Well, I, 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 I don't know that we can come up with a set fee, only, only because it, yeah, we can't come up with a set fee for nonprofit because we have an ordinance that discounts it.
No, you could.
For all of our parks and for nonprofits.
Got to clean it up.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got to clean it up. I think you hit it on the head.
I thought certain things weren't subject to discount, like, like security. We don't discount the security.
That is, well, that is not allowed.
They have to contract that separately, right?
Yeah, that's on their own as well, so.
It's listed as a rental rate, not a, not a incidental. So that's really something to consider as well.
Security is nonprofit as well?
Yeah, because security goes through another.
That's, I mean, I thought they had to hire them themselves.
They do, they do.
Michael, she was saying that if we took off that rental rate and some of these and just put that, it would, it would. Okay. Okay. Y'all.
Lisa made a great point. We, and Michael, on seven, on page three of the Civic Center, where those rates kind of break out from commercial kitchen, stage, runway, that sort of thing, we've struck rental rates and fees to just other equipment and incidental rates. So that would.
Washes it out.
Washes it out.
That's what that change was requested for.
Page seven, what number?
A, B and C, or A. Yeah, page three, number seven.
Oh, page three or seven.
Page three, okay. I'm looking at seven, three.
It says other equipment and incidental fees now.
Okay. So it's not rental fees, so it doesn't fall under the ordinance. I got you.
Right. There you go.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Page, thank you. All right, guys. All right. Committee updates.
I have none.
None, none for me?
Nope.
Nope. I don't have any either. All right. All right, guys, what we got time-wise? Let's see what we got here.
About 10 minutes?
All right, we can get started. Department heads, let's start going through it, see if we can get something done.
I do have one request of you tonight. Item number 16 on your agenda. I'm requesting that you strike that from the agenda tonight. After scrutinizing that contract a little bit, it is, I'm, I'm not ready for you to see it yet. We're going to, we're going to fix that a little bit. I think that number is going to go down. And we are going back and reviewing those numbers a little bit more before we bring it to you for that final number. So I'm asking that you, that you remove that from the agenda tonight. Mayor and I spoke about this on Friday and, and it's, it's just something that, there, there's some errors on Magnolia River's part that I, that they need to fix before we bring this number to you for our final approval.
Okay. So I'm assuming we'll bring it back to the two weeks?
Yes, sir, if we're ready at that point. I think, we can be ready, if they can be ready at that point, then we will, we'll bring it back again.
As long as we get it right, I was just asking, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Good. Okay. All right, Counsel, we'll, we'll remove that one from the agenda.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Wes.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I was originally convinced myself I had nothing on the agenda because I'm usually here asking for something, but this is the antithesis of that. I can discuss item number nine, which is we're requesting you to accept from Gomesa a grant in the amount of $1,328,400, which will go toward Flying Creek Nature Preserve, what we're kind of calling Phase Two of the Park Project. And hopefully you will find accepting that sum of money agreeable to you. And then also, which is probably one of those interesting things, and let me find it. I lost it. It's, it's a pass-through on number 12. Is, we were reached out to in the early plannings of the materials recovery facility with Baldwin County Solid Waste and ADM to apply for a grant that would be 100% pass-through. So we would like for you to accept the $43,000, understanding that we're going to pass that right on to the Baldwin County because they're buying a forklift with it. And there is no match or no cost and, and, and those two things are both exciting and hopefully you're agreeable to accepting those funds.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah. And this is just a cooperative, which is helping out with this.
Yes. Basically with the ADM, they love to see partnerships formed. And so this was kind of one of those structured things where you go in partnership and request this funding and then with it to support that facility. So, thank you. As I understand, Kim, they're going to submit us a paid-for invoice and then we'll, we'll pass that money.
Release the money.
Yes.
So everything has already happened and, and so, okay, we're just a vehicle.
Yes.
We're just a vehicle.
We're not people bidding. They're bidding it out, they're doing all their stuff and then we're just passing through the money as part of cooperative with another.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you, Archie. Thank you, Richard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have item number 10, or I have item number 10, which is procurement of our tasers that are on state contract and they are budgeted.
Do these have scopes on them?
And then also I have, I believe item 17 is going to fall under me as well. I guess with your approval, we didn't have any issues with those streets.
What, what number is that?
17.
Oh, does she run, okay. Anything, Counsel? On 10 or 17? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have agenda item number 11, the Mohawk truck lift for the mechanic shop. It's on a state contract. It is over budget, but as you can see, we are, we've met with Kim and we've decided where to transfer money from out of our current budget to cover the remaining funds.
Yeah, so I saw you were transferring from, for each itemized deal from a different, from a different item line or budget accounting line?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So it wasn't just a lump sum you took from here to meet that number and took from here to meet that number?
That is correct.
And, and Kim, you good with all of that movement?
Yes.
Okay. There's a lot of movement there, I saw. Okay. Okay, all right, very good, very good. Thanks, George, I saw it, yeah, good job, man. That truck is going to help a lot too, I believe, from what I understand.
We got item number 15, increase $1,000 per month for backup services with C-Spar. I did get the amount wrong. The total monthly cost is not going to be $3,560. So if we need to like table this one till another meeting, we can, and we'll get the right amount on there. The right amount's actually $4,266. So we just, we just got increased storage needs for backups and just need to purchase more space for that. But y'all let me know what you want to do, if, since I got the amount wrong, we want to just.
Will both numbers be under budget because?
Absolutely, will be under budget. My budget's 55, so it's still a couple thousand under budget.
You can modify that, right?
We can just amend it. We can amend that if, if we, yeah, we can just amend it if you know the actual number.
It's $4,266.
No change.
$4,256.
Sixty-six. And zero cents.
Sixty-six, yeah.
And zero cents.
Yes, sir. It's still a thousand, I just had the base amount wrong.
So it's $5,266?
Four thousand.
No, total monthly cost of 426.
Okay, got you.
You can just introduce it that way.
Thirty percent increase instead of a 40% increase, which is better.
Instead of amending, you can just introduce it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, just introduce, yeah, you don't even have to change it, just, yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
Yes, sir, not a problem.
All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Lisa. All right. Time is it? We have three minutes, anybody?
So I have an item that is for the ordinance for the water and sewer rates. And these were items that's been, was discussed last meeting with our consultant. So I didn't know if y'all have any questions. I think tonight's just an introduction of the, the rates. And then one item that was added to this ordinance is item number C, which is a $30 bad check fee. We did not have that fee structure set up anywhere, so we have to add it in this ordinance. If y'all have any questions, and we're short of time.
The item two, where exactly is that in there?
Seven C.
Page. Yeah, I saw that. And it's, we added it to each one sewer and waste at the bottom of each one as I read through it today.
And as we change, bring each utility, we'll add that to the, the fee structure. But currently, right now, anybody can write checks and it costs us and there's no fee charged.
So there's not anything to be changed on the introduction, the way it's written? The way it's written in our package is correct, right?
Yes.
That's correct.
I just didn't know if y'all had any questions, but these, these were rates that we discussed as a step one, a step two.
Correct. It reads it to go in effect January 1.
Yes.
Five and. Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll take a, we'll take a brief, that's, we'll end the work session, take a little break and we'll come back at 6:00. We got one minute.